Other than there's a significant cost at all.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Are you going to go with that?
Thank you, President.
Tess.
Do you want to talk where we're going on here for? Oh, no. There will be a list of documents. And additional testing.
Glenn, did you have anything else?
I'll do it in the work sessions.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public comment from Carl Leiter. It is somewhat on the agenda later, but I think staff decided to go ahead and let him present. Again, Carl, you have three minutes.
This in regards to council members, Charles' question two weeks ago at the city planning, at the city council meeting. On page one, two, these are questions I have about language within the plan. Comprehensive planning process promotes responsible growth and sustainable community service and value. This includes an understanding of the growth potential within the existing build areas of Boye, as well as the support for preserving agriculture and natural resources associated with the city. Undeveloped areas within the Boye extraterritorial plan jurisdiction will be assigned land uses and zoning classifications capable of preserving integrity of these areas. Will offer for controlled well-planned growth throughout ten to twenty-five year planning period. And then also on page two seven, correct developmental barriers in the city of Imboy. And then you come on down to action step one. Adopt revised zoning and subdivision regulations and maintain appropriate building codes which support the efficient implementation of the land use plan. Establish new provisions within these guidelines and codes to support mixed land use development, promote sustainable development principles, smart growth, and green building practices. Does anybody know what sustainable development is, or smart growth, or green building practices? Action on page two sixteen, action step six. Create and maintain a listing of home-based businesses so that as the businesses grow, outgrow a home or farm location, appropriate space in commercial or industrial areas of the community can be occupied with a local-based home-growing business. If there's room to expand that business out in a rural location, what would be allowed to expand? Or would even be allowed to start up? And then, the last page that I'm at is page four six. The underground water supply is live through the region and is a source of water for numerous rural private drinking and irrigation wells. Any endangerment to the supply threat in public health, as well as the local farm economy? This natural resource must be protected, securing quality of drinking water from private wells in rural areas within the Boye extraterritorial plan jurisdiction is very important. Currently, Mitchell County belongs to an environmental group that monitors any problems that comes up in the county if somebody has a complaint. And any new wells or septic systems of any kind must be permitted and inspected before that process can be used in a rural location. So it looks like we've got a double up there of some kind. On the last page of your package, watching your last page, you will find the guidelines to smart growth. Calls for mixed land uses, this takes advantage of complex building design, creates a range of housing opportunities and choices, creates walkable neighborhoods.
Carl, your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I always appreciate, and as you can see, I have several questions.
I understand.
And...
Next item on the agenda this evening is the meeting minutes from July the seventh, and appropriations seven due. Any questions? No questions or comments, I entertain them. From the move that we approved, the consent agenda is a priority for council members. That's second, second by Councilman Audi. Any discussion? No discussion. Andy, would you take a roll call move, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Audie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Gimler?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-one sixty-six, stop signs on Walnut Street and Rosebud Avenue in the north campus. Any questions for staff? Pardon?
We're getting hot up here.
Yes. Make a promise.
So they're putting up these street signs?
Not until they have these approved.
Well, your stop signs, street signs.
Street signs, I think you have.
Not yet.
They'll be coming.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance twenty-one sixty-six.
It's been approved by Councilman Audi, then we approve ordinance twenty-one sixty-six, stop signs on Walnut Street and Rosebud Avenue, and it was seconded by Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? Andy, would you take a roll call, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gimler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Audie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next ordinance is twenty-one sixty-seven. Water and sewer rates increase for customers outside the city limits. Any other questions for staff?
I'll move that we approve this.
Twenty-one sixty-seven. It's been approved by Councilman Richards, that we adopt ordinance twenty-one sixty-seven, water and sewer rates, second. Second by Councilman Miller. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Andy, would you take a roll call move, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gimler?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
No.
Brown?
No.
Audie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-one sixty-eight, comprehensive plan.
Mayor, I'm so moved that we accept the comprehensive plan in this authority, but we exclude any mile deal being entered, two-mile, three-mile, whatever. I vote that we exclude that.
I'll go back to that. There's been motion by Councilman Brown that we adopt the comprehensive plan with the exclusion of the extraterritorial jurisdiction. It was seconded by Councilman Latrell. Is there a further discussion?
I think that this is coming from the planning commission. Can we do the motion this way? Because as I have said, that's not the recommendation coming to the planning commission, correct?
Yes, you can. Simple majority. Yes.
So the motion is okay for us to proceed with going on?
I don't know whether anybody else has received this letter. But I got a letter here saying Kansas statute twelve seven fifty-one A. Basically what it says here that if they can, twenty percent of the people within the two-mile zone can sign a petition, get it up for county election, and bring it to a vote. Now, I guess we can go ahead with this extraterritorial jurisdiction, but if that's the case, if you look around, they're going to have the twenty percent, and when it comes to the election, they're going to vote it out anyway. If I'm reading this correctly, I'm not voting. Boy, you're a person that knows these signs.
To be honest, I'd have to study that. I haven't looked at that.
But if there's any legitimacy to this, it's going to be a waste of time having it anyway.
I'm not a lawyer, but I've been where this council decides sticks.
Is there any other comments? Okay. No other comments. Andy, would you take a...
Who seconded that?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Peterson?
No.
Richard?
No.
Gimler?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Audie?
No.
Okay. The motion to pass the comprehensive plan and exclude the extraterritorial jurisdiction fails.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept the comprehensive plan as presented by the planning commission with two-mile issue.
It's been a motion made by Councilman Richards that we accept the comprehensive plan with the two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction recommended by the planning commission. Go ahead, second. Second by Councilman Miller. Is there any further discussion?
What do you mean the two-mile deal for? That's what I want to know.
Forget it, Ruth.
Tell me, goddammit. Tell me.
Hey, Ray, let's keep it civil.
Jesus Christ.
Okay, move on. Okay. Andy, would you take a roll call move?
Peterson?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gimler?
No.
Latrell?
No.
Brown?
No.
Audie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes. Okay. The motion carries on forty-three minutes. He goes into line and well. Next item on the agenda this evening is the wastewater utility. Is there any comments on this, on sewer extension policy for customers outside the city?
I think it's a big deal. Really, do we ever reach a point where, I know there's some regulations about electricity and water, but we're going to build out of something, incorporate that.
As far as, I'm not clear what you're...
Forcing that to be in the city by just a picket city utilities.
Well, actually, this, in a nutshell, what all the verbiage means is that if he wants the sewer utility, he would have to manage, and so it's all that means.
How that one?
It's a sewer. For sewer. Yeah, it really doesn't address...
For water or electric?
No, it doesn't address that. So it's by state, with the Kansas Corporation Division, the state is divided up into service territories under electric and water, and you really can't change that. Well, you can. We trade a territory, but the boundaries are set by it. But sewer is not regulated by the Corporation Division at all. So that's why it's really a kind of a sewer extension policy.
If they're in our boundary though, could we say you're not getting electricity unless you have a sewer?
No, that's not...
No, no. As I say, you have electric service territory.
Because we're in that territory.
Yeah, it's just being wherever the territory is defined by the state. But sewer, they don't address that. Oddly enough, that's never been a utility that the state has been interested in for whatever reason. They do regulate water and electric, but not sewer. So this really just addresses the sewer extension. And so what it would do as a form of policy is if you want sewer extension to your property, wherever it is, you would have to get that. You would eventually have to annex a municipal.
We're still working on an increase in the rates outside the city.
Well, we just passed it.
Well, for water, what about electric?
Electric already has its difference. Yeah, but see, water did not. And that's what we addressed here this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council through the closing extension policy since there's some citizens...
Second, the motion's been made by Councilman Audi that we adopt the wastewater utility extension policy, and it was seconded by Councilman Brown. No further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the cooling tower repair bid from the hail storm in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Does insurance cover that?
Yes, this is what this is. Yeah, it's an insurance repair.
Less already deductible, right?
Right, yeah. This is the hail damage we got from a year ago, wherever that was. We got hit with that hail storm. So yes, it's covered under our insurance. Our plan is covered, our distribution system is not.
How many is it?
Ten thousand dollars. Yeah, we've been past that a long time ago, actually. Yeah, it's been ten thousand. Yeah, it's been long past that with all the damage that we had.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the cooling tower repair bid in the West Shinder in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred dollars.
The motion's been made to approve the cooling tower hail damage repairs for one hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred dollars by Councilman Audi, seconded by...
I'm not seconding. I have a question.
Seconded by Councilman Peterson. Yes, question.
On this claim, or sworn statement of proof of loss, it says in their supplemental claim number twelve that it has to be replacement cost covered within one hundred and eighty days, and it's already at two hundred and sixty, I think, today.
That's pretty standard. You can ask for an extension through your agent.
And have we already done that?
Soon.
Yeah, I've had that conversation with them, but they didn't have any problem with it.
Will you get an extension, can you?
Yeah.
And did it take this long to find somebody to work on? I'm wondering why...
It did. I don't know. It was just running good. Did it take that long to find someone?
We had done the foundation law back.
Accidentally found it, took it with the...
Yeah, we were. When the insurance guy came there, the doctor, they didn't catch it. And they got up and working on the cooling tower. And there was one little block of fence up there, it down broke, down in between towers. Then they got looking at it, and they invited the doctor back, and he pointed to it from the hill. And they took it through their work to get it approved.
Okay.
Any further questions? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is one point seven percent cost of living allowance for all full-time city employees.
Is this, Glenn, is this the base rate for every step?
Correct, yeah. It would increase each one of our steps, rate and stuff. And remember, we have a rate and stuff pay plan. So this would just increase that according to the rate of inflation, which past twelve months, I did the past twelve months better than the calendar year. I guess at one point seven percent, I think this came out, according to the CPI index.
So employees still has to go through a valuation before they get that step?
Yeah, to move up to the next step, yes. Yeah.
So it's not automatic for everybody?
No. Well, this is...
Everybody gets a one point seven percent grant.
Your step does. Your step does, right. But you don't get to the next step unless you...
You have a question?
Since it's already in the budget, I'm assuming we've already voted on this once before, and passed this before.
Well, it would have been, yeah, the 2015 budget. We usually do this earlier in the year. Except we're in the middle of the year, actually passing it.
Passed the budget.
Yeah, he passed the budget, yeah, last year's budget, I guess, there.
I'll make a motion. Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Richard that we approve the cooler raises. It's at one point seven percent, it was seconded by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the the corner house letter to change the residential status at the corner house apartments from senior fifty-five thousand to family out.
If you're in there, this is the greatest thing you can hear.
Yeah, that's it. So it's been moved by, second by Councilman Miller, that we adopt the corner house letter and approve the corner house letter, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? Or Councilman Brown, I'm sorry. He always throws me off. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries.
So moved.
We got one more. The downtown commercial rehabilitation project time extension. This is a project, I think, my understanding, when they have completed everything on the project in time...
They have. They're about fifteen thousand under their original budget for rehabilitation, for the roof and siding, all the glass and all of what they've done there. So they have about fifteen thousand left over, and under that grant, they can ask for an extension once we approve this. It has to go into state for their approval also on that.
I got a question on this. Why wouldn't these doors and pointing up in front of the building and another part of the thing up on the roof, why wasn't that in the original deal?
Because I think they want to put it over their budget. This came in, you know, like fifteen thousand under the budget, so now they want to add some more things to that to improve the building, and that's all they're asking. And it's out of the...
The money, the money's there.
Yes, it's out of the state grant, and they...
The state won't...
Right.
My understanding was that the state wouldn't take the money back once it's been through.
No, they don't. They don't actually do that, so they need to... So now these are additional things that they would do in the next three months, still maintained underneath that budget. So it doesn't cost the state anymore, it doesn't cost them anymore. It's just that their bids so far for the materials and labor have been under about fifteen thousand under the original budget. So it's not free money.
The property owner's share wasn't a percentage of the total cost.
It was, yeah.
And they've spent their total share.
Well, they're still matching as, yeah, I think that as they go along, they match whatever this is. I don't think what their exact match was, under fifteen percent or whatever.
So they'll still be matching this fifteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, I mean, that's what they always do with these grants. There's a local match, but it's the property owners' match. We didn't put anything into it as a city.
One nice thing about it is stretching that money out and getting additional repairs to these older buildings.
Right.
I was just gonna, if you look on the very last page, you've got your total grant at one hundred and sixty-two thousand and the total local injection of fifty-eight thousand. And they still have yet to spend of their, what they call their local injection, which is interesting for a local match. They've spent forty-seven thousand five. So you'll see that they will continue to match, as Lynn said, as they have been all along. They haven't met either number.
And just the projects come in lower than they, I mean, lower than they budgeted for. Because they typically, you budget hot now on any project like this.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the three-month extension of that city.
It's been moved by Councilman Audi that we approve the downtown commercial rehabilitation project time extension. Have a second? Seconded by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
One ninety days.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is adjourned.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Brown that we adjourn, have a second? Seconded by Councilman Peterson. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. We'll go into the work session. All right. Ready to roll here. I know it's exciting once again, we talked about the budget here.
Popcorn.
What's that? Popcorn. No popcorn, no pizza, and no refreshments for you here. I'm going to run through the charts and graphs I usually do, they're just updates of what we normally see. A few twists on them here. I always start in two thousand, this is an even number. This is our overall assessed valuation for two thousand, two thousand fourteen, which of course, that's the city's total overall assessed valuation, the county assessment does that every year. And what you can see, what you get out of this graph is you see, it's not always smooth, but most years, our assessed valuation rose a little, and it did again for two thousand and fifteen, which is, I only go to two thousand and fourteen, but that's the only year, the past year, we have full information. So year after year, you see our overall assessed valuation grow, it's about, this will show you about twenty-three. Now, for twenty fifteen, we were on twenty-four million. So that's a good thing. You see your assessed valuation grow. That means you're adding value to your city, so like to start off with that, it's kind of good news to see that grow. This is our mill levy, and you see it's been in that mid-forties range. And again, two thousand and fourteen, we reported, and then fifteen, of course, we jumped to fifty-five million, which I didn't show here yet, but we'll get to that when we get to the budget, so. Property tax revenue, this is what we've been getting for the past fourteen, fifteen years. You see, as our assessed valuation grows, even though that new levy has stayed about the same, you can see that your overall property tax is now, in the past two years, budget years, has reached over a million dollars there. And that's old, you remember, we said. So again, that's good news. Sales tax, though, has really outstripped property tax. You see, back in two thousand, we were getting a little under three hundred thousand. Two thousand and fourteen, we're getting about one point three million. So it's increased for a year, now over a million dollars. So again, that's a good thing, that's a good indication of where our local economy's at, where retail sector is, and it shows pretty strong performance there on sales side, yeah. Glenn, where's it tracking in two thousand and fifteen? Do you have any... It'll actually a little bit above that, right, because we're six months into that.
You know what that called by construction?
Yes, I'm a strong buy on that. There's no question about that.
Another year and a half will be dropped?
Well, but even projected after this, because much of this happens before, then you can see how it's grown, so.
But if you just take a look around the city, every house, Ben Chinkle, every house...
Oh, yeah, yeah, no question about it, yeah.
All the construction.
So, yeah.
It looks nice.
Yeah, it looks great, yeah. Yeah, we're getting a cooling tower repaired, yeah.
Neither of it's gone.
So, yeah, you never want to overpredict sales tax, because it is volatile, but anyway, that's a strong trend. Most cities, especially our size, have not seen that. They've seen up and down or decline in sales tax. We're fortunate there. And then just did a side-by-side comparison, sales tax with property tax, and you can see a couple of years ago, for the first time, our sales tax there creeps up and then goes past our property taxes, as a main source of revenues for property tax versus sales tax. So again, it's a pretty decent trend. The only one that has not grown, our source of revenue, of course, special highway tax... The only one that has not grown, our source of revenue, of course, special highway tax, that's basically your gas tax, is what that is, that's a combination of a slight decline in our population over the past fourteen, fifteen years, and plus people just aren't driving as much as gas prices went up. And even though they've come back a little down, we still haven't seen a huge increase. We're, we're seeing around a hundred thousand a year is what that comes down to, and, and fuel tax with it. Our franchise fees is what we put on, uh, utilities out there, the private utilities in our heart. And here's general, and we go into the expenses here, general fund expenses, you can see there are, general fund has, you know, grown over the years, but not, you know, it's pretty much tracks your property tax and what it does. And over here, employee benefit.